Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best today. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, we put God and family first. Look, the new T six eighties, they're here, they're here. At Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we still have the thousand dollar sign on bones. We have good equipment. We have Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have a dinner plan. We match your 401K up to four percent. Remember at Wiley Sanders Truck Line, these wheels roll, you make money. Come drive for the best today. Come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Tell them, Bo. At Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we keep it nice and clean. Thank you. And thank you. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice and clean.
Nice and shiny.
Are you experienced driver looking for a good truck driving job? Then try Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. We're looking for team drivers. We're looking for single drivers. At Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we have it for you. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Blue Cross Blue Shield, 401K, drive for the best. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we know one thing, drivers first. Welcome to Wiley Sanders Truck Line's State of the Art Bunk House. Let me show you. Do you like it cold? Then set it cold. Got a spouse with you? We've got you covered. Sit back in the State of the Art Bunk House and watch your favorite TV show. Relax, have a good time. After a long day, you can come in the State of the Art Bunk House and get a great hot shower. Look how nice they are. At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, we keep it clean for you. Drive for the best today. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, we put God and family first. Are you looking for a good company? A company can get you home and you make good money? Then you need to call Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Hey, you know we still had a thousand dollar sign on bones. We match your 401K up to four percent. We've been in business since nineteen fifty-nine. We've been rolling these wheels with money, money, money since nineteen fifty-nine. Come drive for the best today. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Tell them, Bo.
Welcome to Love's. Safe and clean are two words that mean more now than ever before. Love's has been the leader of clean places, friendly faces for nearly sixty years. When you visit our stores, you'll find something for the entire family to enjoy, from our restaurants to plenty of drink and snack options. So whether you're back on the open road or planning to be soon, we'll be here for you and your entire travel party, keeping our stops safe, clean, and stocked with all your road trip needs. Love's, the heart of the highway.
Do you need to get home to your furry friend? Then come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Tell them, Bo. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines is looking for team drivers. That's right, team drivers. Starting out at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Yeah, I said it, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Who's got the T six eighties? At Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we put God and family first. We got Blue Cross Blue Shield. We can get you home. We got the money. We got the trucks. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama. And good morning. We're back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. It's another Monday morning and man, am I excited. Oh, boy, am I excited. You know, I love the rodeo. I love the rodeo, but we having what they call a ranch rodeo. This is what they call a ranch rodeo. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna talk about it. We got two of the gentlemen there. I ain't gonna tell you who they are. I got a surprise for you. You gonna know when I get to the Bible scripture. You gonna know these two gentlemen. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. But I just wanna tell you something on a personal level. If you are looking for some good, clean, family fun, the Calamity Association, they got it. I have never, never went down there and did not leave there just full of laughter and joy. That's just what they do. Uh, those guys, they cater to everybody and they make sure you get plenty to eat. They make sure you get a seat. Uh, any function that the Calamity Association have has always been a good function of. I've been to the auctions. I've been to the kids. Anything steaky, anything they do, they take pride in it. And I'm always excited to have some of the guys on the show with me. But you know what I'm about to say. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, what do we do? We put God and family first. And anytime I can get a volunteer, I just always get me a volunteer. And I asked and this young man told me, I did say young man, he told me, I said, you wanna do a Bible scripture? He said, yeah, I do one. And I was finna give him my tablet. He said, I got one in my head. I love a man that's got God in his head. All right, give us your Bible scripture.
All right. Good morning, everybody. And thank you, Jeffrey, for being kind word. My verse today is, let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, my strength and my redeemer. Psalm nineteen fourteen. Y'all take that to heart.
All right. I, I don't know, but the, the one thing about on Mondays, I get excited because I get to be with new drivers and new trainees. And that's the first thing we do on Monday mornings. We pray and then I come right on to the show and that's the next thing we do. We pray again. Uh, you can't have enough prayer. You can't do too much praying. But we're gonna talk this morning and, and uh, you know, I'm gonna still, I'm just gonna skip straight to it. The mutton busting. If, if you ain't seen nothing else, just come to the rodeo for the mutton busting. Uh, but I'm not gonna steal it all. I'm gonna let you guys talk and tell me some of the things you got going on. We're not, we're gonna take a quick commercial break and we'll be right back.
Take the worry out of Wi-Fi with managed Wi-Fi from Troy Cable. Say goodbye to dead zones. Automatically update outdated technology. Get the most of your signal with specialized access points. With worry-free Wi-Fi from Troy Cable, you can enjoy a full-strength signal reaching every corner of your home. Think fast. Think friendly. Think Troy Cable.
Welcome to Wiley Sanders Truck Lines State of the Art Bunk House. Let me show you. Do you like it cold? Then set it cold. Got a spouse with you? We've got you covered. Sit back in the State of the Art Bunk House and watch your favorite TV show. Relax, have a good time. After a long day, you can come in the State of the Art Bunk House and get a great hot shower. Look how nice they are. At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, we keep it clean for you. Drive for the best today. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. At Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we still have the thousand dollar sign on bones. We give you Blue Cross Blue Shield, 401K. We match it up to four percent. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come drive for the best today. Come drive for the company that puts God and family first. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We're looking for team drivers. That's right, team drivers. Our team drivers can make up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we put God and family first. Bo, tell them. At Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we still have the thousand dollar sign on bones. We give you Blue Cross Blue Shield, 401K. We match it up to four percent. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come drive for the And we're back again with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. You know, we had a little mic trouble. Why did you do that?
Uh, uh, Jeffrey, I've heard of breaking the camera. I never heard of breaking the mic, um.
Never heard of breaking the mic. That's uh, well, at least you could say, well, I didn't break the camera.
There you go.
Guys, tell me something. What is it that drives you to, to, to the things y'all do at the rodeo? I mean, all this hard work, it's just gotta be a love thing.
Yes, sir, Jeffrey, it is. About thirty years ago or so, we, we had an idea to, to come up with a rodeo again. It'd been years and years and years since there'd been a rodeo in, in Pike County. And uh, the board members decided they wanted to put on one and we did. We was at the fairgrounds for the first one. We decided we wanna build our own facility. Uh, the arena, covered arena and the building itself, it just, it just, it worked out. Uh, we had a lot of help from the community, from different supporters and, and it's just been a blessing. And, and we did it to, to help support the youth of Pike County and, and the surrounding areas and, and it's, it's been a blessing. Really have.
Well, I'm gonna tell you something. I wanna, I wanna commend your young ones, the youth rodeo for the Pike County. Let me tell you something. Them boys and girls came on my show. You guys was represented well. I can tell, um, the, the Bible teachers say, train a child up while they young.
Amen.
Y'all have trained them. They are some good boys and girls, just as manable. I was brought up from the old school way. I, I still say yes, sir, and no, sir. I still say thank you, no, thank you. And that's the way they were and they was good. I mean, when you can have that many kids on stage at one time and have all the, them's some trained kids.
That's our future.
That's our future.
Looks good.
And it looks very good, very prominent future. Yes, sir.
These kids that were on your show, they are part of a second generation. Their, their advisors, their parents, in some cases, but all their advisors, they also came up through junior captains.
Junior captain, that's what it's called. Well, it's real nice. I just wanted to take time and commend them kids again, but I, I, I won't tell on them a little bit.
Uh-oh.
They, they told me they were gonna do something and I ain't got it yet. See, I know you guys, y'all are get on. We do a thing where you sit at home with your cell phone. Just like you gave me that Bible verse, where the parents just record their child while he's reading a Bible verse. Send it to Justin and we run it on the show.
How about that?
Any kid. It'd be so nice. I've had a couple of do it. I think they, they, I know they got them busy schedules and they so busy, but next time maybe if you're having Bible study night at your home or you're going to Bible study at the church, when you, when you in that frame, that'd be a good time to do it. Just send it to me. Or if a little kid is at the church and he's doing something, record that. And let's spread that. I am so, I am so tired of when you turn the TV on, everything is negative. I get excited about stuff like this. The ranch rodeo, good, clean fun.
Yes, sir.
Everybody just out having a good time. You know, my buddy, he gonna be walking around that hat. He ain't gonna be stealing a horse.
Oh, no.
He gonna walk from the
I'm gonna try to walk.
You gonna try to walk?
I'll have a horse there to back me up though.
Well, tell me, tell me some of the things, some of the events at the rodeo. Some things that's gonna be going on.
All right. We will probably start with an event uh, called uh, Streak Gathering. Where we turn two steers out and uh, two girdens out and they have to rope them down. Time's over then. We'll have trailer loading. We'll have a team sorting. That's a non-ropeing event, but it's very entertaining. We'll have a branding competition.
Oh, wow.
And we'll finish off with a wild cow milking.
Now, how they do that in the wild cow roping? I wanna see that.
Crazy. It, it, it's not easy. You'll have one roper, two muggers, and one milker. They rope the cow and they'll have a Coke colored bottle, a beer bottle, something with a small uh, neck on it. They have to get just enough milk in there for the judge to pour it out.
I'm excited about that one. I know what I'm doing.
It's ranch rodeo version of bull riding.
It's ranch rodeo version of bull riding.
That's right.
It's a crowd pleaser.
All right. Can I have this?
Yes.
Just to shine up, um, so you can get a close-up on this, what I'm gonna do, uh, I'm gonna be on the radio. Uh, man, I can't get my words. I'm gonna be on the radio the rest of the week from about eight to eight oh five. And I'm just gonna talk about this and, and, and talk about that mutton busting and, and talk about the things you just told me. We gonna make this rodeo just as, as big as it can be, you know? And let the people, people are tired of staying at home and they're tired of watching the news with uh, all kind of stuff going on. This is a chance for Pike County to get out and come together and enjoy one another. First time I met, give me your name again, please.
BB.
BB. First time I met Mr. BB, uh, Derek Thompson sent me down to the Calamity, asked me to go down to the Calamity Association. I was gonna do a little old commercial for the rodeo. BB come in there and he said, you ready? I said, yeah, I'm ready. He said, I ain't never did this before. Just, what do I do? I said, just talk to me. He said, I can do that. BB told me, he said, I can do, I said, just talk to me. He said, I can do that. And uh, those kind of people, y'all are the kind of people that, all the guys are like you guys. They're not with you all over not here, but all y'all got same mannerism. Just be nice, have fun, and enjoy. You can tell the people that's working with the rodeo is enjoying and, and you know, my buddy, uh, uh, Mr. IGA man, I call him.
Johnny.
Johnny, Mr. Johnny, he always be tickling me at the, at the auction house. What you gonna buy? What you gonna, I don't know about. How long have you guys been around this? How long?
About the whole thirty years or so. Uh, I mean, with, since the rodeo started.
Yeah, thirty years.
Yeah, so we've, we've, the Calamity Association's been around for way longer than that, but, but far as the rodeo concerned, uh, yeah, we've been promoting it for, since year one.
And you would invite any family to come and bring their kids and just sit down and enjoy.
Yes, sir. You don't have to worry about your kids. They, they gonna be watched over and they gonna be safe and have a good time. The whole family.
I could be a test to that. I have been there and uh, I've gave away t-shirts and thrown stuff up in the crowd. Never had the most of everybody. This is polite and it's just, it's a good thing. It's, it's good for Pike County.
Well, if you get your kids interested in rodeo and horses, they'll never have enough money to get into any kind of trouble.
For sure. It'll take it. You know, you said something there. My daddy didn't do it with, with rodeo, but he did it with a car and I love a car to this day. And he would get you to work it on a car and he would let you pick up a car. He'd let you do all this and you'd always be just a little short and he'd loan it to you. Well, it kept you where you were. You was always working up. You never had no extra.
Mm-hmm.
He told us about it. I thought, you know, when we was older, he said, ain't nobody worry about your boys buying no whiskey. You was stealing mine. Put water, he got on the spot that and he said, I don't worry about you worry about nothing else. He didn't have no money. Didn't have no money.
That's right.
And uh, that's, that's right. And that, that's a good saying, what you just said there. What I like about the rodeo is though, all the people coming around and, and you hear the kids laughing and when that car comes out there, some of them old timers say, get him. What about horses though? Will they be on the horse when they get this? The separating, that's what I'm trying to say. How do you separate them? What does that, what does that consist of?
Well, some of the events like the sorting and the strike gathering, all team members, this is a team sport, four-member team, all team members will be on horseback. Now, like by a cow milking, you just have one member on horseback. Uh, the branding, there will be two people on horseback if they so choose. It depends, depends on the event and, and they, they're handling these animals, these cattle like they're their own, as gentle as they possibly can. You know, this is not no slam bang thinking man affair. Uh, the good part about it, it's not as scripted as regular rodeo is. The livestock's not used to the arena. They don't know what they're supposed to do.
Oh.
Uh, the folks competing don't do it every weekend. They've got other jobs.
Okay.
And that, it makes for some unexpected consequences. Let's put it that way.
Okay. Now I understand uh, what you was telling me before we came on air. You said, Jeffrey, much as you love the rodeo, you'll show up, love it.
We will.
You're gonna see the different thing. Mr. BB?
Yes, sir.
Are you excited?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm ready.
You ready?
Thing going. Yes, sir. Um, let me tell you something real quick now. We got rodeo Friday night and Saturday night, seven o'clock both nights. Now, Saturday afternoon, starting at five o'clock, we'll have the Western Festival for the kids. Now, they get a big kick out of that. And we use to have hundred, hundred fifty kids out there in that arena, uh, doing stuff. And uh, also Saturday at twelve noon, we've got five chuck wagons coming and they'll be cooking old west style stuff in cast iron pots. We'll have a, they'll all cook a stew, a dessert, and a bread. And we're selling tickets for that. We limited number of tickets. It's ten dollars a ticket for the meal, but uh, I think you'll enjoy it. I sure do. It's old, old west style cooking and uh, it's gonna be a good weekend. They need to come out and enjoy it.
And if somebody would call our number, Justin, when you put the number, oh, it's already up. Somebody would call our number, we'll give a, not gonna give one person all four of them. We'll give a first caller, we give them a rodeo ticket and a meal and the second caller, a rodeo ticket and a meal.
There you go.
Even if they're gone, if you call this number, we'll give this to you. We got another guest coming on today. We got one hour of drivers here. Mr. Ron Hertz, he's here with us. Um, what would you tell a man that was trying to come to the rodeo and bring his family? What would be a good time for him to show up? What you think is a good time?
Well, the gates will open like at five o'clock.
Uh-huh.
So come on and, and uh, you know, check everything out. You might want to walk, walk around, look at some of the stock or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, sir. We may have some music playing and all that kind of stuff, you know, and just mingle with the other folks and just have a good time.
Just have a good time.
Right.
All right. Good, clean, family fun by people who believe in family. Uh, if Wiley Sanders Truck Line is involved in, you can believe that we're dealing with somebody that believes in God and family.
There you go.
That's, that's, that's what we got to turn back to and everything will be all right.
Can I say one more thing real quick?
You sure care, Mr. BB.
We couldn't do what we do without our sponsors and we appreciate you, Jeffrey, doing what you're doing to help us get your word out and we really do. We thank you so much. Uh, our, our regular list of sponsors for the rodeo is, is too numerous. It'd take me a while to go over all of them, but I'd like to go with my chuck wagon sponsors real quick. Not but six of them. And uh, let me read them out if you don't mind.
Read, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Spring Hill Baptist Church, Floyd Tire and Auto, Preston's Restaurant, Pinker's Pastures, Stevens Body Shop, and the Printing Press. And we couldn't do the chuck wagon thing. Like I said, we got five chuck wagons coming. Each one will cook a limited number of meals, so, and we got the tickets divided up, so hopefully they'll all sell for each wagon. So uh, y'all be sure to come out this weekend.
All right. Well, we'll see you Saturday, Friday at the rodeo right there Pike County with Calamity Association. We'll be right back with our next guest.
Hey, everybody. Mike McDowell, driver of the Loves Travel Stop Forward Mustang for Front Row Motorsports. Uh, just wanna send out a special thanks to all you out there that are working so hard to keep America moving. Uh, we know that the world's crazy right now and uh, and things are trying and, and we know that this is a difficult time, but we're so thankful for you guys that continue to stay on the road and keep us going. Uh, we know it's not easy and you have family back home and friends and uh, we just appreciate it so much. There's so much that we take for granted that we realize right now that uh, without those trucks going around the, the country, uh, we wouldn't have any of these supplies. So thank you guys very much. Keep up the good work and we appreciate it.
At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, we put God and family first. We've been in business since nineteen fifty-nine. Come drive for the best today. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Blue Cross Blue Shield, 401K. Woo, we got the trucks. Come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Tell them, Bo. Come join Wiley Sanders Truck Lines today. Thousand dollar sign on bones. We match your 401K up to four percent. Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also have a dinner plan. You could be the next driver of the month. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. You're a certified mechanic looking for a job, then come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. That's right, Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We need good mechanics. Call John Smothers or Ken Bray for the maintenance department. You will have a future at Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the sun shine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields. Though you've probably heard these words before, it's our wish for all travelers, for those carrying the things we need and visiting the ones they love. Those that take to the open road to feed their families, to see new sights, to get ahead. They spend hours, days, nights, even weeks on an endless ribbon of highway, through the weather, the breakdowns, the closures. And then they see it, glowing in the distance, that familiar sign, a sigh of relief. Each day, thousands stop by, each different, each with one thing in common. They need this. They need us. They need a home away from home, a place where everything is exactly the way they like it and the everyday is done extraordinarily well. So today's a new day. Let's be that place, an open sign where there's none for miles. A familiar face that always says, welcome back. A meal that refreshes their soul. Let's be that place where they can grab a warm shower after a long day and be that crew that can repair just about anything. Let's say, rest easy weary traveler. You made it, but let's not stop there. We will lead how America's highway travelers refresh, refuel, repair. We will return every traveler to the road better than they came.
You're not just a number. We know your name. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, family owned, Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come drive for the best today. We got Blue Cross Blue Shield. Hey, we can get you home. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, been rolling these wheels since nineteen fifty-nine. Money, money, money. Just rolling these wheels. If these wheels roll, you make money. Come drive for the best today. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we put God and family first. Bo, tell them.
When you think Troy Cable, think of a world-class network. Think of friendly, local customer support experts. Think of reliable internet, phone, television, and security for your
And we're back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Like I, my driver on here, Ron Hertz. Ron, how you doing, man?
Man, I'm doing good. If I can get my microphone set in.
Get your microphone situated. I should've got all that done before I brought you on the air. Look, uh, first thing I'm gonna do, and I told the drivers that I would do this. A lot of drivers watch this show and we got a suggestion box in the uh, driver's lounge and I promised them loans. They kept it decent and order that I would read it. And uh, a lot of time I just go through it and see what they're talking about and I get it done. We got some drivers that want us to put some dish detergent in the driver's lounge and fix a place where they can wash their dishes for the ones who cook in their truck. A lot of drivers cook in their trucks, so.
I do.
Yeah, you do too? Yeah, that's uh, a lot of guys want the shop to be open twenty-four, seven, seven days a week. We tried that and man, it's just, it's just hard. You go through the days where you got plenty to do and then you go through the days where you got nothing to do, so. Don't think, we don't think about it. And then says, and this one we have already accomplished. They was asking about the bunkhouse being open during the day if it was broke down or needed a place to, to get a nap. And we, we've started doing that. That's, that's already in progress, so. So that's a good one. All right. Drivers, I've tried to get this, but it's just such a liability to, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be honest with you. Probably not gonna happen. Um, and the laundry room, they uh, had some complaints. We try to keep it clean, but if you're doing your laundry, you know how long it takes to do your laundry. Don't leave your laundry in there for four, five hours and to hold the machine up, 'cause nobody wants to bother nobody else's laundry. So I can go along with that. And treadmills. Boss is gonna say no, 'cause somebody might fall and hurt themselves. I, I, I've, I've gotta know on that. I've tried that and uh, I have to go along, not just 'cause, well, it's just, it is, it's, it's the truth. Somebody could get hurt.
You can walk from safety back to the bunkhouse.
So yeah, you can walk around, y'all, but I know we're not gonna have no treadmills, but I want you to know, I'm gonna continue to read them as long as you say something that's appropriate and decent and you never know. You know, Mr. Sanders watch this show, Mr. Parker watch it, you know, and you drivers, you watch it, so. It lets you know that your voice is being heard and that's the main reason. I like to make sure that I read them. And uh, I want everybody to know out there in TV land that I have these rodeo tickets. No one has And uh, I want everybody to know out there in TV land that I have these rodeo tickets. No one has called. I'm gonna leave them here at Troy Cable. I'm gonna make sure I leave them here at Troy Cable, and they'll be here um, until Friday morning. After Friday morning, we will be collecting them back if nobody has came by and picked them up, so. That's one thing we want to say. Ron?
Yes, sir.
How's it going?
Man, my wife told me I gotta give her a shout out. Today is my thirty-sixth anniversary and my son's thirty-fifth birthday. He was born on, on our anniversary.
Really?
Thirty-six years.
Thirty-six years.
Spent the last twenty-one of them here.
And, 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 and we're glad to have you.
Yes, sir.
Last twenty-one years. Ron, I know you've been thinking all morning, why does he want me to be on this show? Why? He's been calling me, calling me. I wanted you to be on this show because the job you have did at Wiley Sanders Truck Line, and, and see, maybe you can help all those other drivers that I've been flagging down and say, come on in. Uh, it's great. I appreciate it. We have a safety director now, and uh, and I won't sit up and look. And sure, you hear me. We have a safety director now that listens. He flaps on his ear, and he said, what you tell him, don't fall on deaf ears. So we appreciate your input, but most of all, we appreciate the service you gave, because, and I'm gonna tell your wife this. What's your wife's name?
Greta.
Huh?
Greta.
Greta?
Yeah.
Happy anniversary, Miss Greta. Because let me tell you, without Greta being by your side, you could not have been as successful as you.
A hundred percent.
So I think you and Greta.
Absolutely.
I think that both of you, for, for making this work, for making it work for Wiley Sanders Truck Line, also making it work for you. Thank you for all the years you've done. There's no Ron, ain't, ain't, ain't dying, ain't leaving us. There's sometimes you just have to take time. Uh, I had Leon, I want Leon Miles to come. I want Dan Dodgers to come. I want Paul Pitts to come. So I'm calling them out now. I want some of them old greats. I call them old, them legends.
Got to have Willie Green come.
Yeah, Willie Green come. Why don't you call legends?
Yes, sir. They are.
Oh, God, y'all guys, nothing fits to the young people, but I look at you guys, and I think, that's a lot of miles. Do you ever go down the road and wish that you had a, 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 you could say a penny for everyone on white lines you've seen?
Oh, man.
Just a penny. Just a penny. What would you have?
I can't imagine.
Huh?
I can't imagine, you know.
How many new trucks have you wore out? How many new trucks have you got? Because I know you get.
I've had a new truck every year since two thousand and five. And this is the first year I turned a new truck down. I actually liked the one I'm in. It's really comfortable. It's kind of like a good pair of jeans. I just don't want to get out of it.
Yeah.
But my boss is giving me a brand-new truck every year to drive, and in turn, I try to, when I turn it in, I try to have it as nice as can be, and you know, and I don't smoke, and I don't let, you know, I try not to uh, let it get wore out, so that the next person that gets it, you know, even though I heard you talking today to the orientation class, you know, that the new guys weren't gonna get the new truck right then, but we have some ones that are coming back. I want that to be that truck.
Yeah, yeah. You want that truck to be a truck that a guy can get, but will still be proud of.
Happy about it.
Still happy about it. That's right. You know, I was so glad to have a guy in the recruiting class this morning. Have a guy that's done been there and done tested out, because I wanted those guys that was starting the process he was starting to see, it can happen. And you notice I told him, I didn't pick no guy that just went squeaky clean. I picked somebody who had had a bump in the road. And uh, but he was two weeks out, and I talked to him, and uh, he listened, and, and we got through it. Training, um, is not as easy as it seems, but the fact of it is, what other job, and I say this week in and week out, what other job other than the trucking industry that you can go into for six weeks? Come out of that school for six weeks, go into a training program for six weeks, total twelve weeks, and making anywhere from forty to fifty thousand dollars a year?
That's right.
That's, that's gonna be hard to beat, man. That's gonna be hard to beat.
And not be in debt like some of these folks.
And not be in debt. And if you go through, if you pay it out of pocket and you come with us, we'll pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month or till it exceeds five thousand dollars, whichever case come first. Not only that, during the process of us paying it back, you know, we're strong enough, and we got a, a great company, so we don't have to put you in no contract. That's just, you signing on and we doing that. During that course of the time, if you decide, hey, you know, this is not the place for me, that's fine. We don't want no money back. We even Steven right there, vice versa. If we decide that you don't work out, we vice versa. I'm always leery of a guy just trying to get me to do something that wants me to sign.
Yeah.
And give him a certain term. I, I ain't borrowing no money. I'm getting a job.
That's right.
I got no problem with it when you borrow money. Yeah, they want you to sign and, and because they're giving you, but to come on a job, it should be a sign, get my paycheck, and go to work.
That's what I do, you know. I recruit students, and I tell them, I said, look, we don't make you sign a contract because we feel our company will keep you here. You know, if you have the good equipment, if you're running good miles, you've got good open communications, and you really feel like people care when you talk to them, you don't need to sign a contract. You'll stay.
You'll stay. But you know, going back to what you just said, to come on the show on your anniversary, Ron, that makes me feel special. You, I got to be a part of you and your wife's anniversary today. What are y'all gonna do today?
Uh, we, we had our uh, actually, I'm headed to Houston and Seattle. But uh, believe it or not, one of the things that we decided is that sometimes trucking will throw a wrench in it, and you won't make it home on a certain day. And you know what? That's okay. I mean, that was, once my kids were grown, if, if we had to do Christmas two days later, or we had to do it a week early because of scheduling, we're okay with that, you know, and, and it was part of the job, and part of this is, is if you're really gonna do this, and you're gonna be successful at it, be flexible, and, and have a, and understand that if you want an eight-to-five job, this ain't it. You know, work in an office. Work in an office. This is an irregular route carrier with irregular times. Things happen. You know, in the twenty-one years I've been here, two times have I not made it home due to a dispatch problem. The rest of them, it's either been weather-related or mechanical.
Yeah. And you know, and I think you'll attest to this too. We are big enough to get you everything you want, but small enough to be your family.
Absolutely.
You know, and I, and I say that to people, and they look at me like I'm crazy. We're big enough to get you all the things you want, get you everywhere you want to go, but small enough to be your family, not to get you.
That's right.
And when I say that, you know, you put a, you put a thousand marbles in a basket, and you pull them out, they go everywhere. But you stay like our fleet is. We, everybody knows everybody by name. Dispatcher knows all his drivers, because he ain't got five hundred drivers. He got enough drivers. He become relationship with them. I know, uh, you're Thomas, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thomas Hicks. You and him on first-name basis. Y'all probably know what each other's thinking before they think, you know, you know, when you unload certain places, you already know where you're going. And uh, man, I'm gonna tell you, Ron, you got some guys around that are really look up to the job you're doing them. And I know you know these guys are your friend, but Scott Maddox, he's always, he's, I think you gave Scott a lot of advice when he was learning to get his CDL. I think he was real helpful to him, and he really appreciated.
He's good people.
Frankie, um, so they be telling me these secrets. Frankie tells me that he reaches out to you sometime, asks you stuff. There are no eyes on the road no better than the man just on the road. And I'll say that again. There's no better eyes on the road better than the man that's on the road, and that's you, and that's you. We can sit back and make decisions, you know. I've gave Sean of, of a couple of my schools to go by, you know, because traveling too full kind of gets to me because of the fact that I need to be around, you know, but sometimes I do, I want to get out. But every time Sean goes, and he carry that truck, I get a buzz about it. I get a buzz about it. People be telling me, man, I'm, I appreciate you sending a truck, and it thinks like something we, so it works. It helps when you go by there with the truck. It don't hurt nothing.
No.
Put it that way. It don't hurt nothing, and, and I've had drivers to show up at schools that I'm gonna be in. But there's no story told no better than the person theyself to deal with. No. Um, and I just want to mention this, and I don't want to go too far into it, but I had a guy that come in my office. His name was Caleb. I'm not gonna say his last name, but he had some difficulties. And I was disgusted giving up, and this is what family does. You ever been doing something, you got a brother, sister, one of the brothers wants to do this, but the sister say, don't do that. Well, in his case, Brandon say, we, we got to do something else. And uh, I leaned on him. I called you, and I told you the situation, because he still drives those, I'm not gonna damn embarrass him. And I told you the situation, and you said, let me take a shot at it. And you did, and every time I see him come in that office, sometimes I'm gonna make my eyes water. So really done it, and really let me know that we put family and God first, was when that kid's father called me.
Oh, yeah.
And he called me, and he told me, somebody give my child a chance. And he was proud of it.
Oh, he should.
Huh?
He has every reason to be.
And, and, and he's a good kid.
Very good kid.
Good kid, good kid. And that's what Wiley Sanders does. That chance that was closed, that door that was closed, that looked like it wasn't no key to the lock. Just every now and then, and I'm not gonna say we get it all right all the time, but every now and then, we unlock that locked door. That's the ones, I know you can see them, and you can say, yeah, I remember him, you know, and it makes, I tell people all the time, nothing makes me feel no better than when I'm going out the gate or coming in the gate. And I ain't gonna call no kid. I'm gonna call him a driver. And I see a driver going out that gate that, that I bought in, and maybe everything wasn't quite right, or yeah, maybe he been struggling a long time, and you know, and this was a break for him, but turn himself around. He wants to work now. He wants to have something. When I see he done been through the training program, now he got his own truck, and he go out the gate. Uh, Malik, and I, and when I remember your name, that mean he got ready down in here. He was in my office Friday, and uh, just a good little kid, doing good, out there riding. It's a lot of success stories, but Wiley Sanders Truck Lines has been good to so many people. So many people. I, I heard you say you and your wife, thirty-six years. That's a long time. How many kids y'all got?
I got one, one son and two granddaughters.
Two granddaughters?
Two granddaughters.
How old are your granddaughters?
Twelve and fourteen.
You took them on the truck yet? They old enough, what is it, fifteen? All have to be.
Well, I told them that you have to be thirty to be able to ride. Listen.
All right.
Yeah, I don't need to take them.
Pretty sure your wife is watching you. Pretty sure your wife is watching.
Let me tell you, one day, we were getting ready for church. My wife was out of town. They spent the night. I put my clothes on to go to church. They looked at me, said, you're not going to church like that, are you? I don't need them on the truck.
So they say you was old-fashioned, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that always happened. Well, tell me, what are, what are some of your hobbies other than driving a truck that you like to do?
I love to go fishing. I, I, I mean, I'm absolutely, I'm absolutely one of these kind of fellows that I like to just sit on the beach and watch the sun go down. My wife and I like to go yard sailing and antiquing. Matter of fact, one week, we just drove down to Lake City, Florida, spent the weekend down there, and you know, did, did some antiquing, and you know how I can tell it's still in my blood to do this? If I'm home more than two or three days, about the third day, third night, I start dreaming about trucking. I ain't kidding. Last night, I was dreaming I was in the truck, and that's when I know it's time to go back to work. But you know, the great thing about it is, is after two decades of doing this, I still look forward, when that Qualcomm goes off, it's kind of like, where do we get to go next? You know, and, and, and things like that, and it, it took me two years of being here to hit all forty-eight states. All forty-eight states, two years. And it took twelve years where I have driven every inch of every interstate in the United States, at least once, sometimes just once, and uh.
Wow. Say that again now, because.
I, I have driven every inch of every interstate in the United States. Now, I'm not talking about the bypasses and the spurs, but if they're two digits or one-digit interstates, I've driven every single solid inch, you know, Wiley Sanders Truck.
Wow. Wow.
Coast to coast. And I've driven completely across the Canadian, uh, the country, from one end to the other.
Really?
On, oh, yeah, that was the greatest run ever.
Where'd you go?
We, uh, there was one of them HB and G loads.
Yeah.
And man, they started us up in uh, in uh, up on, in on Quebec. And me and my wife were driving down, and, and we end up going all the way over to British Columbia. Well, you'd think, most of Canada looks like the United States, and when you're around the big cities, they got them big roads. But when you get about twenty miles outside of, let's say, Toronto, it's Tulane. It's like going down Highway ten to Greenville. You, what happened to the interstate? And uh, we saw this lodge, and my wife wanted to get a picture of it next to a moose. There's one right there. So I, like this, we jump out, I said, stand by the moose, honey. I raised the camera, and the moose shook his head and walked off. We thought it was a statue. It was a real, listen, oh goodness lord. Let me tell you something. You ain't, you ain't seen two people out of shape run that fast.
Pushed out a movement.
That's it. But you know what? We've gotten to see, we got, uh, there's a lot of stuff. I, I like, love history. I've taken students down to Tombstone, Arizona, and they've seen where Morgan Earp was shot and killed, and you can still see bullet holes in the, in the uh, casino, uh, in, in some of the casinos. I've taken several students into downtown New York City, you know, and they've seen Ground Zero, and that's a very sobering place to go, and we just, and do a lot of LA, you know, we see, we were at Krispy Kreme one time, and me and a student saw Ozzy Osbourne getting doughnuts, you know, really nice guy.
Yeah, you uh, I tell people all the time, there are things I've seen trucking that I probably never afford, you know, never be able to see.
That's right.
To go there and actually visit, you know. But I tell you, I wish you was gonna be in town Friday because this rodeo, you ain't seen nothing.
I need to go to a rodeo.
You ain't, you ain't seen nothing to that little kid. It's the funnest little thing, and I don't know where to get to look, but that little kid, when they turn, when they open that shoe, and that thing is running, and they're holding on. I saw this one kid laid over to the side, and he just holds on, because the sheep will run so fun, then it'll just stop. But they be on there, boy, girls, and they be, it be so fun. It be so fun.
Do you wear a cowboy hat when you go?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Don Walker, hit me a cowboy hat. I'm gonna show up one of these days.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you a little story about a cowboy hat. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell this, and I'm not gonna cry when I tell it, but I had the chance, um, uh, Ms. Toni Sanders give me a cup, well, she give me one, she give me two, of Mr. Sanders cowboy hats after he passed. And at the regular rodeo, some of the sponsors get to ride on the trailer and get to ride around the uh, arena, and they've always invited me, you know, and I've always went, and I always get this hat out. And what I do, my head is low, I take a sock, and I wrap around the hat, and I put it on. My mom says, I'm going somewhere with this.
Was his head that much bigger than yours?
Yeah, a little bit bigger than mine.
Wow.
This was a, this was a sobering moment, as you would call it. We're riding around arena, and the Kalaman had lost uh, a lady, uh, man, they had lost some people, and they had a horse standing in the arena for them. And here I am, I'm sitting there with, with this hat on, and I'm looking, and I think, wow, what a big stage. You know, sometimes you can be in a, in a, in an atmosphere, if you one day, am I worried at this? And I was looking at that hat, and I thought about the man who wore that hat, and that sock was kind of tilted down a little bit. I never said nothing to nobody. When I had to take the hat off for us to wave, I took the hat off, and I waved it like that, and I put it in my lap. If you go in my office, you'll see that hat. Said I'm a little too, that's a little too big of a hat. It was the man, it wasn't the hat, and what he represented for this time. And I put that hat in my office. And it's been, it's been peaceful. I look up there, and I look at it, and I know, and I keep moving on.
What a neat story.
Yeah. And I always will keep it up there. And I don't never try to wave it no more. I got another one at home, but it's like real tall. This one, an old fashioned one. And I always will keep that stuff, um. When you look at the rodeo and you look at Pike County and you look at the things that we did in this county, I'm proud of it.
Absolutely.
I'm proud of it. Uh, you heard me talking to the gentleman earlier and I was telling him, they had kids up here. I bet it was, oh man, I'm gonna say thirteen, fourteen of them. And they was just as mannerable and polite as you ever wanna see a group of kids. They had some talkers up there. One, I told them, I said, you need to be a politician. That little kid, that's all. Well, I'm gonna go back to the clip on that, Joe. And one of the kids, I felt like I, I knew him because when they, when they had the steak cooking and we was out there eating. He sit with me, him and some old kids. Thomas Hicks little boy sit with me and Thomas, your dispatcher. And I remembered him from that. I said, I know you, me and you had dinner together. He said, yeah, Hoss, you was sitting with us? I thought they was sitting with me, but he told me I was sitting with them.
Okay, got it.
And that's what it's all about. It's all about fun, but I know this is short notice, but I'm gonna get the date of the next rodeo. Which I think he said, coming up soon. But anyway, when I get the date of it, I'mma already go and get you two tickets. And I'mma hold them in my desk. And I want you and your wife to make time.
We gonna make time.
I know it. Like you say, all you gotta do is know the date. And y'all have fun. I have a Wiley Sanders table set up there. You can come by the table, sit and talk. It's just really fun. I used to get somebody from my office to go with me.
Yeah.
I had to get somebody, cause I can't be still, man. I had to go out there to that rodeo. I just can't be still.
Hey, I want, I got one tale, a little story I think you'll like.
What's that?
I was broke down one time, remote part of Alabama. The guy comes out there, old country fella, and he says, I'm here to fix you, get you on the road. I said, great. He said, you know, I like working, you know why I like doing work for your company? I said, why? He goes, I can fax them a bill today and I'll have the check in the mail tomorrow. He said, why? They pays their bills. And I, and I thought that was kinda weird. And so we got to talk and I said, well, most of your bigger carriers don't. He goes, no, sometimes I have to wait thirty, sixty, ninety days to get paid. I send Wiley a bill. You know what that says? That, that says that we have a reputation. That means that we're taking care of, they're not only taking care of their drivers, they take care of their vendors.
Oh, yeah.
Because without them taking care of the people that support us, we ain't going nowhere.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And that was just a neat story, you know, that this man was so impressed with how Wiley did their, did their stuff. And that was just really, really true.
Well, you know, when a driver is out there, which you was a firsthand of it, when a driver is out there, you wanna be able to call somebody. And you want to be able for them to go work on that truck. And you want them to know they're gonna get your money and you are very important to us to get you going. I could sit here all day long and, and, and tell you stories of, of people, um, that, that had come out and the reason they came out because of where we had paid them and it may be Sunday and I had a guy come out one time and jumped me off. Uh, the truck I was trying to hook to was surrounded by somebody else's truck. I didn't wanna touch him. He come there and, and jumped that truck off and eased it back. This hat on a suit and a tie, was on the way from church and, you know. And so it just tells you the, the, the things we go through and the things that we do for other people. Every Monday morning, I say this, and I say it from a heart. I say it from a heart. If you can't make a living driving a truck for Wiley Sanders Truck Line, I am worried about you in this industry. I'm not saying I'm the only game in town, but I saying that you can make it here.
That's exactly right.
You can make it here. And, and you can make a good living and you know, I, I hire people. I gotta make sure I say this right. Get in trouble. I hire people that other companies have terminated for stuff that I would say is silly.
Oh, absolutely.
Something that they just did. And I don't wanna get into things. It's one thing Mr. Sanders has taught me, Mr. Stephen Sanders has taught me. For me to focus on Wiley Sanders Truck Line, I see why the Sanders companies have been so successful. They don't get into all that other stuff. They focus on what?
Absolutely.
I talked to a guy, his name is Doug. Doug gonna get on me. Not Doug Kitchen, this was a Doug. He works for the KW Plant. And he's working on this project. And it's so interesting to talk to this guy. This guy's from up north. And boy, he comes in the gym in the morning time and, and he's like me. He wants to see this country working and people going and, and having things. And he's, um, he be telling me about that project. Our country, it's, it's, it's just people have got what, a lot of people got what they don't wanna work. I'm not gonna say our country. I'm gonna say some of our people have got what they don't wanna work. And this guy is telling me the jobs and the opportunities he's got. And I'm gonna tell you this quick story and I will get out of here. But he had a young guy that did not wanna go, did not wanna listen to something he was doing. But he told the guy, he said, just go in, sit in on it. And he sat in on the engineer's meeting. You know, when they, this guy's engineer and they was talking about stuff. Well, afterwards, the guy said, man, I wanna do that. And he said, that's what I've been trying to tell you. Let me teach you something. Come on, let me teach you something. I would burst that around and I remember, and I guess they say you, you do your testimonies when you get old, so I guess I'm getting old. But I think of as a, as a young man coming to Sanders, don't know Adam's house, cared about nothing. Nothing. Just out of school and did not wanna go to college. That's all I did though. Those are the one concerning things I had in my mind. Well, my folks wasn't gonna let me sit around there and eat their groceries. It was simple as that. You gonna get a job if you stay here. And I tell families all the time now, if you got a guy that's a, a son or daughter that's over twenty-one years of age and they ain't doing nothing, put them in the truck driver's school. Let them take care of themselves until they figure out what they wanna do. So I was in a figuring out stage. My parents had, had sent me to Sanders in a figuring out stage. You know, you figure out what you wanna do. Until then, you work.
That's it.
And I was sweeping the floor. I was on trash truck. Old man named Matt Boyd was there and he, he knew my parents. And, uh, he asked them to give me a job. And I was sweeping the floor. It's pretty good.
I gotta tell a story if you remember this. You know,
What's that?
You know where I first met you?
Where?
I gotta tell you, I, I broke down and I busted, something happened to my transmission. You drove the wrecker down to Canton, to the International Paper Mill.
The P Q.
I had just met you.
Yeah.
And, and I jumped out there with you and, and, and I was watching you and you was hooking everything up and we rode back to Troy together. Couple of years later, I had an issue where another guy, a different fellow, had to come up with a wrecker in Indiana and get me. And is having i- issues hooking it up. And I showed him something that I watched you do. He said, hey, that's pretty good. You've been a wrecker driver before. I said, no, I watched Hoss Daddy do this. I said, if you kick it, but you gotta hold your mouth right when you kick it. That thing was, and you know what? It worked.
It worked. It, you know, I, I was blessed. I was blessed. I had Glenn Bullitt. And he works on the yard now. He works out there with us. Well, he own Bullitt Garage. And to this, I'm just old fashioned. To this day, they, they try to tell me to go tell Mr. Glenn something to do the other day. I said, I ain't telling Mr. Glenn that. Y'all asked him to do it. I still look at him as Mr. Glenn to me. But we used to go on wrecker trips. And he would tell me, he said, you do like I tell you, and you'll learn how to do this stuff. And while them other guys was unloading what was on that trailer, I was stuck up on them, Mr. Glenn, pulling them chains, whatever he told me to pull them.
That's right.
Well, it paid off because we had a truck to come off sixty-five, going to get on two thirty-one on the loop and that curve, and it laid it over. It was HD filling was living then. And I got a chance to send it back up. To me, that was such an accomplishment. But when I look back, if it hadn't been for all them times I was with Mr. Glenn and learning and and, and, and that's the point we're making here, people. Learn something. Be around somebody and learn some. I, I, I ain't no telling how many trainers you have trained. Do you know, you keep such good records, you know how many people?
No, but I'll tell you, I, I did. Scott told me the other day, I've actually got two here that's over two million mile drivers. And I, I know I got at least four or five that's million mile drivers.
Wow.
And one guy's just, left here. He worked here for a few years, but he became Assistant Safety Director at another company. You know, and, and he started out here as a trainee.
Yeah. It's, it's definitely a, a great place to work. Definitely got great equipment. Definitely got great people. It makes my heart joy every Monday morning. When I can look around me and say, there's over seventy-five years standing around here, you know.
I saw some new trucks on the yard too this morning.
I saw eight.
I said, wow, look at them, man, they pretty.
I come out there, sir, and I counted them. It was eight.
Man, they pretty.
Yeah, they pretty. But you know, that's another thing. A guy comes here and he sees new equipment coming. Let me tell you something. Go try to buy a new pickup right now. Go try to buy a new anything. It is hard to get. We have some old equipment because we can't get no new equipment. We're trying to get equipment. It's, we, we're ready. And, uh, I just think if this economy would, if everybody just get on the same page and we just go to work, this thing will just, we'll get right back out.
Absolutely.
We'll get right back into it. You got some companies like the Sanders Company, just ready to go. I could hire a cleanup guy today. I could hire several mechanics, Ken Bray. I say, ah, but I mean, if they was to call me, I could get them in touch with Ken Bray, John Smothers. You know, they could go to work today. A driver, I could hire him today and he could go to work. Uh, it used to be the time, it wasn't like that. And we complained. Now we complaining because we gotta go to work. Now stop being right with that. I ain't the smartest person in the world, but stop being right with that. This oughta be the happiest time in the world for any individual just looking for a job because he can find one. I've heard my parents talk about not being able to find work when work was hard.
Absolutely.
You know?
You see picture of them folks standing in line at the soup kitchens?
Yeah.
Cause they, they can't get a job for anything.
Yeah. And, and now, um, you know, you ride up the bypass and you see Captain D's giving a sign on bonus.
When I saw McDonald's giving a sign, oh, you gotta be kidding me. Wow.
But you know what? You said something a while ago, that that guy came and he, uh, he fixed your truck and he said the reason he was gonna get you going because he could fax them a com check and he'd have his money tomorrow.
Yeah.
Well, you think about this, every Wednesday morning, we get a thing called Easter.
That's right.
Don't you get it every Wednesday morning?
You know, that was one thing I told my students. I can maybe count on two or three fingers how many times my check's been off.
Yeah.
But when I call payroll, one of the first things they ask me, well, when they figure out it's their fault, we can either send you the money right now to your truck, or we just add it to your check. It's not like, you know, we'll get to it or something like that.
No, it's what you want to do.
An honest error, you know, something didn't get put in correctly, they have offered to send it right. They've offered to send. I'd do like your last gift, take the call.
I know, talk about one. But you know, um, and that's great. It, it, it's good to know. There's nothing wrong with working, but being guaranteed the cash is good to know. It's good to know. I think he just told me thirty second, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Once again, before you leave, you tell Greg a happy anniversary and bye-bye.
She told me, she said, I'm, she said, I don't get to watch you very often. And she said, if I'mma watch this show, I better hear, hear a shout out. I said, I'mma, I'mma.
Well, take one another one.
Another one, a shout. And then my son, Mike, Mike's, he's thirty-five and he's, uh, a bank executive now, got a wonderful family, two girls, just built a new house.
Well, that's good. We're out of here. Don't forget, come by the TV station. We got tickets, we got rodeo tickets. They'll be here till Friday morning. Until next Monday. Goodbye, goodbye.
Home or business? Most importantly, think of a hometown company connecting its community. Think fast, think friendly, think Troy Cable.
At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, the only place you'll be stopping is at the bank. Wiley, money, money, money. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best, two days.